Public hearing for I-10 and Buella Road interchange. If you do not hear the audio at this time, please check your computer speaker settings. If you're experiencing technical difficulties, please contact technical support at amanda.hadley@attkinsglobal.com. In the event of technical difficulties during the open house or public hearing, please stay online while we work to resolve those issues. My name is Iris Waters, and I will be moderating this public hearing for the Interstate I-10 at Buella Road Interchange Improvements Project Development and Environmental, or PDNE, study on behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation. Thank you for your interest in this study. Eric Saggers, the project manager for this PDNE study, is overseeing the hearing in-person location at the Pine Forest United Methodist Church in Pensacola, Florida. We are both being supported by representatives of the FDOT District 3 and the consultant team. We would also like to take a moment to thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We will now turn our attention to the narrated public hearing presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation District 3 welcomes you to the public hearing for the I-10 and Buella Road Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study. Financial project ID numbers: 433-113-1-22-01, 433-113-2-22-01, and 433-113-3-22-01. Federal aid project number: 0101-211-I. Efficient transportation decision-making, or ETDM, number: 14176. In addition to the PDNE staff here tonight, a representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding residential or business relocations on this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be part of the public record for this project. Before we start this presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this meeting. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one in the upper right corner of the screen shown here. To listen to the meeting, your computer or device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select "Phone Call" in the Audio pane of the Control Panel and dial in using the information displayed. All virtual and phone-in attendees will be placed in Listen Only mode throughout the public hearing. The comment period will begin as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comment requests from the in-person viewing location will be addressed first. Verbal comment requests submitted during the online registration will be addressed second. At a later date, we will provide written responses to all verbal and written comments received from this hearing. Providing verbal comments using GoToWebinar during this hearing is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided at registration and unmute you. If your microphone icon is green, your microphone is on, and you may make your comment. If your microphone icon is orange, click the microphone icon once. You will be unmuted, and then you can provide your comment. You will not be on camera at any time if you join online. During the public comment period after the formal presentation, in-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online participants who wish to speak. If you called into the public hearing by telephone, your phone is automatically placed in Listen Only mode and will remain in Listen Only mode throughout the public hearing. A recording of the webinar will be available at the project website three days after the hearing. The project website address is nwflorides.com/d3virtualmeetings. You can also call the project manager, Eric Saggers, at area code 850-415-9001 after the public hearing to request additional project information. Before the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review online at the project website, nwflorides.com/d3virtualmeetings. The documents are also available at the Pensacola Library located at 239 North Spring Street, Pensacola, Florida, and will continue to be available until March 28, 2021. Due to COVID-19 restrictions at the library, individuals who would like to view the documents at the library should call in advance at 850-436-5060. You may also view the documents tonight at the in-person public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvements, its conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential benefits and disadvantages pertaining to social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. There are three primary components to tonight's hearing. First, the open house, which occurred before this presentation where in-person participants were able to view the project displays and to speak with the project team and provide comments in writing or to the court reporter. Virtual participants were able to view the project materials online and provide comments verbally or in writing via the chat feature. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse, and proposed methods to mitigate adverse project impacts. And third, a formal public comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide verbal statements. Those at the in-person location may also provide comments directly to the court reporter. And all participants may provide comments in writing by completing a comment form in person or online at the project website, nwflorides.com/d3virtualmeetings. This environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District 3 in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws pursuant to U.S. Code Title 23, Section 327, and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, between FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA, signed on December 14, 2016. The FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. The proposed improvements involve widening Interstate 10, or I-10, from four to six lanes from the Florida-Alabama State Line to the Pensacola Way Station, a new interchange on I-10 in the vicinity of Buella Road, and widening Buella Road from two to four lanes from West Nine Mile Road to north of I-10. This hearing is being held to provide you with the opportunity to comment on this project. This public hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state regulations. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concern about Title 6 may do so by contacting either the Florida Department of Transportation District 3 office or the Tallahassee office of the Florida Department of Transportation. Their contact information is also provided in the project handout and on the project website. FDOT is conducting a project development and environment, or PDNE, study for this project. The PDNE process is used to evaluate potential impacts to determine an alternative using continuous community outreach to ensure that all interested parties have meaningful participation. Public input and information received at the hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. The study limits are Interstate 10 from the Florida-Alabama State Line to the Pensacola Way Station, and Buella Road from West Nine Mile Road to north of I-10. This project is consistent with local transportation plans, including the Florida-Alabama Transportation Planning Organization 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, State Transportation Improvement Program, or STIP, and other regional plans. The purpose of the project is to improve regional connectivity and mobility. Secondary purposes are to reduce congestion on adjacent roadways, decrease commuter trip lengths, and enhance emergency evacuation by providing an additional connection to I-10. The project need is driven by increased traffic demand resulting from current and future land development within the project area. As a result of this growth, there is a need to provide connectivity from these new areas of development to the surrounding regional transportation system. Additionally, there is a need to provide an alternative route to reduce travel times and congestion while also providing route choices for hurricane evacuation within the study area. Build alternatives and a no-build alternative were evaluated as part of this PDNE study to meet the project purpose and need, as well as minimize impacts to the natural and built environment within the study area. The no-build alternative assumes no improvements are made and does not meet the project purpose and need. However, it does provide a baseline condition against which to compare and measure the effects of the build alternatives. A detailed comparison of the build alternatives is provided in the preliminary engineering report and the environmental document. The build alternative improvements include widening 3.1 miles of I-10 to the median from four to six lanes from the Florida-Alabama State Line to the Pensacola Way Station, a new interchange on I-10 in the vicinity of Buella Road, widening 1.4 miles of Buella Road from two to four lanes from West Nine Mile Road to Isaac's Lane, new traffic signals on Buella Road at Frank Reader Road, realign Buella Road, the I-10 eastbound ramp terminal, the I-10 westbound ramp terminal, and West Kingsfield Road, and drainage improvements and stormwater ponds. The preferred alternative for I-10 would be to widen 3.1 miles of I-10 from four to six lanes from the Florida-Alabama State Line to the Pensacola Way Station. A typical section is a visual representation of what the new roadway would look like. The widening of I-10 from four to six lanes would occur toward the median, adding a 12-foot lane sloped to the inside in each direction with 12-foot shoulders, of which 10 feet would be paved. The existing lanes and outside shoulders would be resurfaced and would remain sloped outward. The design speed is 70 miles per hour. The proposed new interchange on I-10 would be constructed in the vicinity of the existing Buella Road overpass. A 0.7-mile section of new alignment for the Buella Beltway would be added from Isaac's Lane through the new interchange and terminating at West Kingsfield Road. The new Buella Beltway alignment would feature four 11-foot lanes, a sidewalk along the west side, and a shared-use path along the east side. West Kingsfield Road would be shifted to the north to avoid conflicts with the proposed interchange. The preferred alternative for Buella Road would be to reconstruct and widen Buella Road from two to four lanes from West Nine Mile Road to Isaac's Lane. The proposed Buella Road typical section from West Nine Mile Road to West Kingsfield Road, a distance of 2.1 miles, would be a four-lane divided principal arterial with raised medians, curbs and gutters, a six-foot sidewalk along the west side, and a 12-foot shared-use path on the east side. Other pedestrian features such as crosswalks and pedestrian crossing signals would also be provided along Buella Road. Intersection improvements on Buella Road would include adding turn lanes at West Nine Mile Road and Frank Reader Road. This section of Buella Road has a context classification of C-3C suburban commercial, and the design speed is 45 miles per hour. An important element of this PDNE study was to evaluate the potential project impacts and benefits. A wide range of environmental resources were evaluated, including various social, cultural, natural, and physical features. Engineering and traffic factors were also considered. This slide illustrates the impacts of the preferred alternative. A comparison of the impacts from the build alternatives is provided in the PDNE study environmental document. One of the unavoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary relocation of families or businesses. On this project, we anticipate the relocation of four residential properties and no businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an appraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits if you are being moved, and if you are unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, and you may appeal that determination. You will be promptly furnished, necessary forms, and notified of the procedures to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution: If you move before you receive notification of relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits may be jeopardized. A representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here tonight and will be able to provide you with further assistance if you have questions regarding residential or business relocations on this project. The build alternative may potentially impact 52 parcels. The total construction cost is approximately $152 million, which includes the cost for right-of-way, construction, and construction, engineering, and inspection. Access management is used to determine the locations of driveway connections, median openings, and traffic signals to improve safety and traffic flow. Proposed access management modifications are on display tonight and on the project website. The project will not affect the access classification for I-10, which is a limited-access facility, Class 1. The addition of medians on Buella Road will result in access management changes. Currently, Buella Road is a two-lane road with no medians and is classified as access Class 6. Considering the facility design features, proposed speed limits, and existing land use adjoining the roadway, access Class 5 has been recommended for the proposed four-lane Buella Road. The proposed posted speed limit on Buella Road is 45 miles per hour, reduced to 35 miles per hour at the signalized intersections at West Nine Mile Road, Frank Reader Road, and through the interchange to West Kingsfield Road. The proposed access Class 5 is consistent with the facility design features of the improved roadway, along with existing and future development. The access management classification and standards for arterial roads are: Full median openings will be spaced at least 1,320 feet apart; Directional median openings will be spaced at least 600 feet apart; and traffic signals will be spaced at least 1,320 feet apart. The transportation development process for this project began with feasibility study. We are currently completing the PDNE study, and preliminary design is in progress. This will be followed by final design and right-of-way and the construction phase. The project is currently funded for the PDNE and design phases. The I-10 widening and Buella Road widening are not currently funded for right-of-way. The new I-10 interchange at Buella Road is partially funded for right-of-way, and the project is not currently funded for construction. This concludes the formal presentation. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate your input on this public hearing into our decision-making process. After the comment period closes and your input has been considered, a decision will be made, and the final PDNE document will be sent to the FDOT Office of Environmental Management, which, based on the Memorandum of Understanding signed with the Federal Highway Administration on December 14, 2016, has approval authority on this project granting location and design concept acceptance. Please note that we will not respond to your comments and questions today, but we will respond in writing at a later date. Anyone desiring to make a statement will now have the opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways you may provide your comments tonight: written, verbally, or online.
Takes a little while to sync all the different things we have going together. Thank y'all for your patience. We are now going to call upon the in-person participants who have requested to speak. We have a microphone set up here, which will be sanitized between uses. As I call your name, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. Our first speaker is Ms. Janice Gilli, the county administrator. Oh, you don't want to speak? Okay, no problem. Thank you very much for being here today. Okay, our next speaker, and I'm sorry, I'm going to do my best, Philip Pirelli. Yes, thank you. Okay.
Philip Pirelli, 7226 Shelby Lane, Pensacola, Florida, 32526. My only comment is... ...reasonable. So, I just think, I know that everything is money-driven, but we do need to look at including that process, that part of the project now supposedly.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I can take my comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next comment is from Gary Ellison.
Gary Ellison, 2200 West Kingsfield Road. My major concern is the added ingestion at West Kingsfield Road because we've got a lot of subdivisions north of Kingsfield on 97, and they're going to cut through there just to get on the interstate, and that road is dangerous. It's got four 90-degree turns in that road. It's really narrow, and the road's beat up. It's not taken care of. It's not maintained at all. And on three properties on that road, and there's a lot of other neighbors I have that are real close to the road there, and I just worry about the safety of the children, too. So, that's my main concerns, and it's going to draw in more traffic, I guarantee it.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your comment tonight. Does anyone else here desire to speak? If so, you may come to the microphone and state your name and address and complete a speaker's card after you've given your statement for the public record. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting. Ms. Pirelli had a great comment about extending the project south of Nine Mile Road on Buella Road all the way to Mobile Highway. There's already a lot of congestion. It's very narrow. It's going to be common sense that people that are traveling south on Buella Road will cross over Nine Mile Road. You've got a lot of retail, new homes being built, even more projected new homes being built. The place is just growing. It's insane the amount of growth that's going on. So, I agree with him. I know that's many others that would agree to have that section south of Nine Mile Road included in this PDNE, the study, so forth, so on. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
My name? Sean Bullington, Cricket Ridge. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else that desires to speak tonight in person? Okay, thank you. We will now call upon our online participant... Oh, perfect. Come on. Sorry, I didn't see you there. And if you'll just state your name and your address.
Okay, my name's Jeff Neely. I live at 8670 Foxtail Loop in Pensacola. It's off of Nine Mile Road. I've lived in this area of Escambia County for almost 30 years, and during that time, I've seen an inordinate amount of construction projects that just take forever to complete. It's like moving from one area to another, very necessary projects, understanding the need to have them completed. My concern is, well, it's kind of twofold, but one is, how long will this project take to complete? You know, it's three different portions. You know, this, like Avalon Boulevard, that's almost like 10 years. And honestly, the people in this area can't handle that frustration. They're going to get tired of it. It's going to lead to a lot of problems. So, what we would like to see is an accelerated schedule for all these projects. We'd like to see a reasonable timeframe, not a pipe dream like Nine Mile Road, which when it's done just from highway or from Pine Forest Road to Buella Road, it's going to be two years over the estimated completion date, just that portion. So, how long is this project really going to take? And the other concern is, how is this project going to be coordinated with now the six-laning of Nine Mile Road and the interchange that is being proposed for Highway 29? Because that's going to have a great impact on the people that live in this area. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to do a better sweep of the room this time. Okay. Thank you. We will now call upon our online participants who have requested to speak at registration. When you are unmuted by the organizer, please also make sure to unmute your microphone using the GoToWebinar control panel as shown on the slide. If you did not ask to speak when you registered for the hearing but would like to do so, please use your raise-your-hand feature on the GoToWebinar, and we will call on you once we hear from those who have previously registered to speak. Mr. Goss with GoToWebinar, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Iris. We will begin with Mr. Matthew Oaks. I see you online there, Mr. Oaks. I am unmuting your microphone, and you may now make your comment. Mr. Oaks, you are self-muted. Okay, thank you, Mr. Oaks. We will give everyone another opportunity after I go through the list of folks that are pre-registered to speak. Next is Elizabeth Westmark. Elizabeth, your microphone is unmuted, and you may now make your comment. Elizabeth, if you can hear me, you are self-muted on your microphone. All right, thank you, Mrs. Westmark. Like I said, everyone, we'll give everyone another opportunity to make a comment after I go through the pre-registered list. And now is Edward Allen. You are unmuted, and you may make your comment. All right, thank you, Mr. Allen. Next is Vince Odenbrett. All right, Mr. Odenbrett, like I said, if, for some reason, if you're pre-registered and you are online, possibly under a different name, you will still have an opportunity to speak. Just use the raise-your-hand function, and we will get to you once we get through the list of pre-registered. Next is Fred Donovan. All right. Also pre-registered to speak is Amanda, and forgive me if I say this last name incorrectly, Amanda Varvaris. Next is Edward Allen. Edward Allen, and that concludes our list of folks that pre-registered to make a comment. We'll give everyone a little brief period now to raise your hand and make your comment. And I don't see any hands raised online, so I will... This concludes the public comment period. I would like to thank everyone for taking their time to share your comments concerning this project. And Iris, I'll turn the presentation back over to you.
Hi, Mr. Darrell. It looks like Elizabeth does have her hand raised.
Okay, she's not showing up on my screen, so if you can unmute her, then...
Ms. Elizabeth, it looks like you're self-muted, so if you'll just press that microphone button, we'll be happy to hear your comment. You can go ahead, Ms. Elizabeth. You're unmuted. We need some Jeopardy music. Ms. Elizabeth, we're not hearing you. I'm not sure if you're speaking or saying your comment, but we're not hearing you at this time. If for some reason that you want to make a comment and you're having technical difficulties, feel free to leave us a comment on the website or on the email address that is about to appear on the next slide. We're happy to take those comments in a lot of different ways, and they all hold the same weight, and you will get a response in the same manner. Anyone else that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand virtually. Okay, you may submit comments after tonight's public hearing, but they must be postmarked or emailed by April first, two thousand and twenty-one to become part of the public hearing record. Written comments can be mailed or emailed to the project manager, Eric Saggers, whose contact information is as follows. Mailing address, F D O T District Three, one zero seven four, Highway ninety, Chipley, Florida, three two four two eight. His email address is, on the screen shown here, e-saggers at h n t v dot com, or you may also reach him by phone. This information is also in the handout and the in-person participation received tonight and in the virtual participants may download. You may also visit our project website at northwestflorteroads dot com slash D three virtual meeting to further view documents and submit comments. The exact transcript of this public hearing's oral proceeding, together with all written material received as part of the hearing's record, all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing will be made part of the project decision-making process and will be for public review upon request. Thank you all for attending this public hearing, both in person and virtually, and providing your input to this project. I would like to remind you again that you can also submit your comments in any way that's shown on the screen here. I hereby officially close the public hearing for I-ten at Beulah Road P D and E study. Thank you for your participation, and have a safe evening.